Hi, Robert. How are you? Hi, Leslie. You're muted.
This is planning board, not select board, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's separate. Select board ended at 6:30.
I accidentally hit the select board button and then when I saw you, I thought, well, maybe I didn't unselect it.
Yeah, Robert's here too. Well, I think you're, I think you're good.
Okay, I'm gonna mute myself.
Okay.
Might even take off my picture so I can eat my supper.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I have to make a phone call. I'm gonna do the same. I just have to be there here for, to log everybody in. Turn over the harvesting.
Hey, Deacon. Hold on a second. Okay, well, I didn't even log in the other thing. Recording.
Hello?
Hello?
Okay, we made contact. Good.
All right, Deacon, how you doing? It's Peter Geese. I think I've lost you.
You're muted, Deacon.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
So can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good. If I had said no, would it have made a difference? Oh, well.
Okay, Deacon, I made.
Okay.
I made Nate a co-host, but then he disappeared.
I'm here.
Oh, you're meeting host.
Yeah.
I can see his pic. Oh, good, and labeled so.
Yeah. So, yeah, I, yeah, I got real confused, Becky, because I went to try and, you know, the meeting link had not been sent out. So I said, all right, well, let me go and see if I can, you know, get in and, you know, get everything set up. And then I think, you know, I had the credentials to get into the, you know, different accounts. So I didn't see the meeting or, you know, the select board was still going on. So, yeah. I was a little bit confused and concerned for a second there. I didn't realize that you were gonna actually start the meeting for us.
Yeah, I told, I told Deacon I would do that and then make you a co-host and Michael DeCaro a co-host and then I'll disappear.
And.
Stay with us?
I will stay for a little bit. I gotta wrap up some things, but I, won't be showing off my fancy hairstyle.
And Becky, you're, you're certain that Zoom will not, you know, boot us out of the meeting if none of the people have been made.
Because I did this with the ZBA about two weeks ago.
Okay.
I was very, very nervous, so I was standing by and then checking on my iPhone. I went in separately and everything was fine.
Okay.
Yeah, just as long as there's a co-host. I could make, yeah, I stayed a host on that one because people were kind of in here. But as a co-host, you can do everything you need to do. And then you can turn off the meeting. Or I can double check later and come in and turn off the meeting. So there's two meeting hosts. Oh, Miriam just changed her name.
She did.
Great. Um. Nate, do you wanna be meeting, Nate, the meeting host?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. And then I think we're gonna make Michael a co-host so he can let people in.
Yep. Well, I said it so everybody's flowing in automatically.
Oh, right. Well, if that's the case, then, I mean, you know, Michael's also probably gonna be doing some screen sharing, so I just need to make sure that he can.
He's called to that.
Okay.
Okay.
We have Linda, Steve, Robert. We're waiting on Jeff and Jeff, Robert, Michael. Raptors here. Steve is here.
Steve's here. I don't know who Zoom user is, but.
I think it's Leslie. Cause she's been on for a while.
Oh, there's Robert.
Hello.
Hey.
Just to let you know, I am here, but I'm eating my supper, so I'm on mute and no video. Leslie.
And you're under the name Zoom user.
Well, that's what I am, I guess.
Michael's here, okay.
Hey, Becky, if you wanna make me co-host, if you haven't already.
I'm trying. Something happened. I think you moved just as I did it. There we go. Yep, that's what I was waiting to do, Michael.
Great, thank you.
Michael, did you get my package?
Um, let me see.
It didn't work texting. It always got kicked back to me, so I emailed it to you.
Uh, I did.
Okay, good.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. But, but, I don't know, I don't understand why it got kicked back to me on the text, because that is your number, correct?
Yeah, it might have been size.
It could have been. I tried sending it one at a time, but it still didn't work.
Yeah. Well, it worked this way.
Okay, good.
I know Jeff was planning to be here.
I'll remind him.
Well, he may have some trouble. He was gonna try to do it on his phone.
Yeah, that could be a challenge, actually. Okay. Okay, he just responded. He said, not able, no laptop. Is there a call-in number for the Zoom?
That's what he told me earlier today. That was what he was gonna try to do.
Okay. I'll tell him he has call-in number. Is it a message, Nathan?
I can tell it to you. It's six four.
Let me get it. I'm gonna send it right to him. Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Six four six. Five five eight.
Yep.
Eight six five six. And then he needs the other stuff too. So the ID is eight two one.
Hold on.
Four.
Eight two, whoops, eight two one.
Four seven one one.
Four seven one one.
One six six eight.
One six six eight.
And then the last, and the last, the last thing is the passcode. Four zero zero.
Hold on. Four zero zero.
Nine zero three.
Nine zero three. Okay, let me just run the ID by you again.
Yep.
Eight two one four.
Eight two one four.
Seven one one one.
Yep.
Six six eight.
Correct.
Okay, I'll send it off to him. All right, I sent it.
Well, Peter, I understand this is your first Zoom meeting, unfortunately.
Yes, it is.
This is what they, a lot of them are like.
Really? I, I've heard all about it from people who have kids and trying to do school classes with the kids via Zoom and, especially with young children. It sounds like it's a disaster.
Well, we're not a lot better.
Oh, that's okay. It seems to be functioning.
Well, it's just after seven. Why don't, why don't I open the meeting by reading the governor's announcement and then, we'll be started. Following the governor's restrictions on public meetings.
Select car.
Yeah, I know.
It's popping and.
Were you going someplace?
Had, I muted him. Okay, following the governor's restrictions on public meetings, this meeting is being held virtually using zoom.com for remote participation. Public may access it following the, the instructions on this meeting's agenda posted on the town calendar. If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access, the public can request a recording of the meeting by contacting clerk. Well, we've done that. Is that, is that Jeff phoning in?
Must be.
I.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, it's me by phone. That's the best I can do.
Okay, great. You look great. So.
Thanks. I, I did my hair up special for tonight.
Yeah, we don't need to see you drinking anyway.
Yeah, screw you guys. I'm the only one that's having a good time.
Okay, so, the first item on the agenda is public comment. So if someone wants to speak up now about something not on the agenda, or if you need to leave, this is the time. Not hearing any public comment, I'll ask Michael to, to screen share his image of, of Peter Geese A and R. Okay, I had that queued up. Give me one second. I'm sorry. Just have to get it again. Okay. Can you guys see that? Yeah, so, so Peter, why don't you, why don't you explain what you're doing with, with this map?
Okay, essentially, I own multiple properties continues to my large property, which is M39, which is the largest parcel. You see a top center of the map. And then I also own the section to the right, which is outlined in a boulder line. And it's listed as parcel A and revised lot one. So I own that parcel as well. And my intent today was to convey acreage, excess acreage from that property and marry it to the M39 property.
Yeah. Okay, so, so does everybody see what he's trying to do?
Yeah.
Hey, Jeff, are you on speaker?
I think I am. I think I am.
Can you turn it off? I think there's some feedback.
How's that? Is it better?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, that means I gotta hold the phone up to my, to my ear.
But we all have great faith that you can do that.
Well, you know, in, in the short term, yes, but.
So I guess I just have a clarifying question, Peter. So when you say you wanna marry it, are you, are you talking about marrying parcel A to the bigger lot?
That is correct.
And so the revised lot one is, is also your property, but that would stay a separate lot or become a separate lot?
Well, that, that becomes a approximate four acre lot instead of a 12 acre lot. Currently, the lot is approximately 12 acres. And I wanted to convey the excess land over to my other lot.
Got it. And I had one other clarifying question, if I can, Deacon.
Please.
So if you look down here on the, on Wendell Road, they're just like this little diagonally. It's not frontage. It's sort of like off the road. And I was wondering.
Is that typically done when you want to maintain frontage?
So you're trying to maintain the frontage.
Maintain the frontage, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, this is Jeff. Can you guys hear me?
Yep, yep.
I, I had some, I, I mean, I have some concerns about this. I'm not sure that they're sufficient to, for us to not sign this, but my concerns lie, lie with revised lot one and whether this plan degrades the frontage on that lot by making about half of it essentially illusory frontage, not frontage that could provide any meaningful access. I realize there's a driveway already and there already is access to the duplex dwelling on that lot from the portion that's not affected. I mean, that's my, that's my only concern and, I mean, that, that would probably show up in some possible zoning issue that may arise with the house on lot one in the future. May or may not arise, you know, whether that lot still has viable vital frontage, because a little strip like that is often not interpreted as, as proper frontage, because you can't access across it. And our, our bylaw talks about frontage being such that it provides access. So this modification would make half the frontage provide, able to provide access, which it does, and the other half not. So I just have that worry about lot one, but it's not enough of a worry to make me not sign the plan. Can I, can I add something to that, Jeff?
Sure.
That section of the property is all flagged as wetland. So to, if, if somebody wanted to utilize that, they would have to go through a wetland. So, uh, you know, from, from speaking with Eaton Associates, speaking with Tom Reedy, they both erred on that issue and both cleared it as a common practice and acceptable by most towns. I, I didn't, I, I don't think that either one would have proposed that had they thought that it would have been in violation of regulations for frontage requirements. You might recall that a few years ago, I did a land swap similar to that between my M77 and M76, when we tried to make a correction of the side lot line. Whereas the original, the original division of those lots was done just perpendicular to the back lot line. And it never took into consideration the arc in the road. And so when I went to convey the property, I wanted to make sure that the lot line on the map was representative of the actual lot line on the property. So it was kind of done before the, the work on the property was done. And we created a similar, very narrow triangle to maintain frontage. And we swapped area, square foot for square foot. So already down the street, you have a very similar situation with a very narrow triangle. And you still maintain the frontage and the area.
Yep. Yeah, no, I've seen it done before. In fact, it, it was done in my old neighborhood. And, and I did it. But, but this is a fairly extreme example, but I don't, I don't think it's a reason for us not to sign the plan.
Peter. This is Nathan. Just, I, I'm curious if, if that area of the property is, is a wetland. Then, you know, what was your justification for conveying it to the other lot as opposed to just, you know, leaving it with the existing, you know, lot that has a dwelling on it instead?
Well, I, I wanted to gain more acreage and I walk the property a lot.
Yeah, okay.
On a daily basis. And my thought is the more area, the better. Nothing's ever gonna be done with that, like the rest of my woodland. It's basically for recreational purposes. And if one day I decided to sell the property, I would maintain the acreage.
Understood, thank you.
Peter, I just had a quick question. It's not really neither here nor there, but what's the, what's the frontage on Highland Drive? I can't, I don't see.
The frontage is 150 feet. And then there's that little chunk of frontage to the far southern end of the property, which looks like 90.
Yeah.
Eight three feet. Uh, the lot originally was divided, I wanna say in 1986. And at the time, the frontage requirement was 150 feet. And so it did have bona fide frontage from that one strip. When I recently, a few years ago, came in to close a house, that issue was raised. And I believe Jeff, maybe you can put some words to that. I don't remember exactly. You found that there was an issue, but you also canceled it at the time. Because I didn't create that that way. I, I, I don't remember exactly what the details were. But the lot was grandfathered with 150 feet of frontage. So even if you didn't have that small section of 90 feet, it would still be a bona fide grandfathered building lot.
Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Yeah, we got through and around that issue at the time. I can't remember the details, but, but, but it was raised.
Does anybody else wanna say anything about this?
I, I just switched back to speakers. It, how's it sounding?
Okay. I made out what you said.
Okay, I, I just, I'm worried about feedback, so let me know if it develops again.
So do, do we need to look at this, at this map anymore?
No. I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion that, that we sign the plan.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? I'll, I'll call the roll. Robert?
Yes.
Michael?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Nathan?
Nathan?
That's an eye.
So.
The whole family agrees.
Everybody, everybody's in on this one.
Yeah, yeah. So Nathan, I, you and I are an A. Say that again? Uh, are you voting to approve this this plan?
Yes, I'm an I.
Okay, and Steve?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Uh, so I will, um, I will sign this tomorrow at the town hall for the board. We should, let's uh, let's figure out what we want to charge, Peter. There's no, um, there's, it still has the same number of buildable lots. So do, what do we charge?
We gotta charge him for at least one lot.
Yeah, yeah, we we didn't yet. I actually emailed Beacon. I realized reading the minutes that we haven't yet approved that little asterisk um, discussion that we talked about with having multiple lots. I don't know if this is applicable, but I could find that and read it to the group if that was helpful.
That would be helpful to me, Michael.
Okay, one second here. So what we wrote was when multiple special permit applications are required for, so this is about special permits, but maybe it pertains. When multiple special permit applications are required for a residential project, project, the applicant is encouraged to consolidate them so the planning board can hold a combined public hearing. The applicant should communicate this intention in writing to the chair of the planning board at the time of submitting the special current applications. I guess is the critical part. The fees for consolidating the applications will be as follows. The full amount of the most expensive application fee plus one half of each additional application fee. Please note that if subsequent hearings are scheduled for separately submitted applications, whether for new or previously or denied projects, the full fee for those applications will be required. So it's not, I mean, it's not a peril because it's not a special permit application, but.
I don't think that, but 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 I think I.
It's a second for half price. That concept was, I think, what we were shooting for.
So, so I mean, my sense is that what we have here now is is one new is one new buildable lot, which is different from the previous buildable lot by being smaller. So my guess is that what Jeff says is that we charge for one. Are you?
I think that's what we did in the case of Spry.
Yeah.
He he had a number of of polygons that were not buildable lots, and we didn't, you know, we didn't charge him for those. So this parcel A is a polygon. It's not a buildable lot. Um, so we're not, we don't charge for that, but but we do charge for the revised lot one.
Yeah, okay. So we'll charge seventy dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a bargain.
So so, uh, so we've, we've approved this, Peter. I I can, um, I can go to town hall tomorrow and and sign everything and um, and you can pick it up from Grace after that and and give her the seventy dollars.
Okay, made out, of course, to the town of Shutsbury, right?
Well, you can make it out to me.
Okay, Deacon Bonner, got it.
Yeah. So down to Shutsbury, we're we're good.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Let's move on to the minutes of seven twelve.
I'll move to approve the minutes of July twelfth, two thousand twenty one.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, sure. Yeah.
I heard Linda.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I I did have two typos.
Go for it.
Okay, on the first page, the. Deacon, we, I'm sorry, would you give me just one moment to uh, to get that up? I'm sorry, I don't have it up yet. Okay, I have it up and all right, we're on the first page? Yeah, the the next to last paragraph, the the last sentence that that should say Dakara begins. Instead of beings? Yeah. Fair enough. Yeah, that's good. That's good. It's pretty minor. And there's one more. And at the bottom of page three, Franklin County Sheriff, the last line. That should be one sheriff should be one R and two Fs. All right, thank you.
And Nathan, I had two, although I said I was good and they're really small. So first I'll say I thought these were great. So thank you for.
Yes, and I'd like to repeat that. I I really liked them.
Yeah, very good, man.
Yeah, so the the two things are small. One is just the story of my life, which is um, in the calculation of special permit fees, the last line of the second paragraph, it's just a capital C in my name. But you spelled it, you spelled it right. That's 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 good. Um, the other, well, actually, I got two other small things. On the next page, it said Steve makes motion that Michael drivers derive a response, that one.
Um, it's on this page two?
Yeah. The first paragraph is the board. The second one says Steve makes motion. I think that's page two.
No.
Oh, no, it's page three. Sorry. No, what's, it's, well, my my other suggestion is put the page numbers on there. That was my third recommendation. Um, wherever the, wherever um, response to messages to planning board email, it's at the very bottom of the page.
Yeah, right, yes.
So the next page.
Yeah, okay.
It says Steve makes motion right there. Underneath, it says roll call is unanimous. And.
Oh, yeah, that whole paragraph is stricken. Um, and the starting, yeah, that whole thing can just be, I'm going to remove it.
Okay.
And uh, yeah, that was just kind of like a placeholder. And then I did the actual, you know, thing before it where what, you know, wrestler moves, Lacy seconds, discussion on roll call vote.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because the roll call vote motion carries unanimously is the right way to do it. So that was, that's perfect.
Um, and that's where your missing capital C is. You're not bad with the amount of times your name popped up in this thing.
You spelled it right. So you know that you get extra points.
I thought you were gonna say I spelled it wrong. My heart started to sink. Okay. Um, all right, so I have the uh, we removed that. Did you have three, Michael? What was your third one? Did you already?
I put page numbers.
Page numbers, okay, yeah, okay.
What was it?
Yeah, so. So I I guess we, I mean, there's a motion on the floor to approve them. So I guess we need to approve them as revised.
Yeah, I I have, this is Jeff. I have one little revision. Where it says Lacy reviews action items. There's like items one through eight. In here, item number four, it says Jordan Peterson. I think it's Jordan Harrison, not.
Yes, yeah, it is.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So, yeah. Big deal, that's it.
Okay, I don't know who Jordan Peterson is, but Jordan Harrison, okay. Okay, Becky.
We got it. Got it, Becky. Thank you.
Thanks, Becky.
Have a good meeting. Thank you. Bye.
Bye.